A regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one routine justice for all. Sam, if you could please read our vision and mission statement and take role.
Our mission statement is that at Richmond Community Schools we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. Our vision statement is to foster a culture of academic excellence, creativity, and character, ensuing that all students are prepared for success in an ever-changing world. And Board Member Cunningham?
Here.
Board Member Mashawn?
Here.
Board Member Sutton?
Here.
Board Member Steyer?
Here.
Board Member Teltum?
Here.
Board Member Willis?
Here.
I am Board Member Mortimer. We have a report.
Thank you. We're looking for a motion to approve our agenda. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have support?
Give it to Candace.
I think it was Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, sorry.
Any discussion? Mr. Wonstley?
In your packet you should have been given this evening a revised personnel report. So with some of the retirements that we've had, we've had some resignations. Jamie Claussen resigned from the Where Everyone Belongs advisor. If you recall, she'll become the new director of special education beginning July 1. Michael Dalio resigned as the robotics co-advisor, the other co-advisor, Rans. That will be posted. Dr. Mark Lab resigned to student government advisor. He's still a classroom teacher. Mr. MacArthur, the trap team coach, that will be posted, as well as Mr. Presnell, the boys varsity basketball coach. Just as a reminder, in the packet, all the subcategory coaches for varsity have to be posted also by contract, so the JV and freshman will also be posted. New hires, you'll see Jennifer Basil, as it's pronounced, she will be the new Title I teacher. The office of Walters retired. You see a hire for Sue Boyd, they were for a trap coach assistant. She wasn't recognized, it just didn't get re-approved by the board, but it's effective April 1. Jacob DePries will be the secretary to the director of athletics. The previous secretary went to the ISD. Erin Dotson, she's the new math teacher. She did her student teaching at the high school, so she will start at the high school in the fall. Stephanie Harris is a first grade teacher. Mrs. Basil and Mrs. Harris on your backup. Mrs. Basil said first grade, she would have been Title I teacher. Also, she will start in first grade to replace Mrs. Dorsey. Roy Leaverton is the high school choir teacher. Mrs. Maples went to take a position in a private school and be the church choir director. Mrs. Raven is a special education teacher. This is just increasing staffing and meeting requirements, that we needed to add them. Mrs. Krant, who will now become the high school counselor, starting in the fall, replacing hers. So in your backup, you also see several of the positions. We are in a very good spot for the retirees and leaving in terms of most of the positions have been filled, so we just have a couple more to fill, which we are in the process of interviewing. The only question I had regarding, I actually didn't have any of the minutes, there was no questions on the minutes for the district head count, so that's okay.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Wonstley?
Brian, just Mr. MacArthur, am I correct, he has been with us since the inception? He brought the trap team to us, Mark Berlindi, is that correct? He's been doing it all along?
Yes, but there was, who was it before him?
Berlindi, Mark Berlindi.
One more third.
Caldwell?
Yes, Fred, that's right.
They were kind of all together.
I just want to publicly thank him. I mean, he brought, with Mark Berlindi and Fred, brought this to us and has done a great job with those kids and that trap team has had a lot of success, so just want to publicly thank him for it.
Absolutely.
Brian, I just, so on this personnel report, like everybody listed on there, the coaches, everything, those are all for what we're expecting for the 25, 26 school year?
Expecting in terms of if they were hired or that were post for them?
Yes, like I think everybody that's listed on there currently and their current, like current, as current positions?
Yes, yes. Nobody has submitted a resignation letter, so basically the way the contract reads, as long as it's effective, they keep, maintain the position. So that's what that list represents.
Gotcha. So that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, so if the contract said that it's not, then they wouldn't be listed, if we listed this open, not this personnel report, is that correct?
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our Division II State Softball Championship. Preston, I know you're going to start up the board, we want a lineup going that way. And ladies, if you could, I guess, start with me.
All right, so, um...
Alphabetical.
Are we? Okay.
Alphabetical.
Last name.
I don't know that.
No.
I can't do numbers.
There we are. I see a light. Okay, I'm here to introduce a great group of kids, some super hardworking, ultra-positive, extremely talented ladies that had just a phenomenal season. You know, you can talk, the two games at MSU for the state championship, there were so many great games and great experiences along the way, and I was just happy to be a very, very small part of that. And just one thing I want to, I want to say publicly is, you know, this team, there's a lot of talent, but also has one of the best team cultures and program cultures that I've been able to be around. These girls love coming to practice, they love coming to games, they love their teammates. I think that that really shows in those, those big games, when the margin for error is so small. When that margin for error is so small, it's those little things that get you through that. Leave it to me to break the microphone. But it's those little things, it's that team chemistry and that culture that gets you over those, those big hurdles. And these girls, whether it was Orchard Lake, that 1-1 battle right down to the minute, and then the wind shifted in Crosslex and carried that ball over the fence, or, you know. It did, I swear. I looked up at the flag, the four, and I was like, the wind's blowing out to center, we got a shot here. Sure enough, Anna put it up in the Gulf Stream up there. Or, you know, those two, those two awesome games at MSU where it was just back and forth, back and forth, and it was going to be whatever team blinked first. So I'm, I'm super proud of these girls the whole year, and our, and our coaches as well, that's where all of that starts. So I'd like to publicly recognize them. So we'll go, looks like you're alphabetical too. Emma Bambrick. Keaton Caposo. Kathryn Kristowski. Emmy Hildreth. Anna McKernan. Audrina Nader. Kendall Nader. Arabella Nichol. Lily Pikes. Julia Rancilio. Katie Schuboy. Ashley Stafford. Katie Teltum. And Taylor Toye. And then our coaches, head coach Howard Stewart. Kevin Caperton. Nicole Clark. And John Foster.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kate Teltum, and I am a member of the Richmond varsity softball team. Our team would like to thank the Richmond School Board for supporting the softball program and inviting us here tonight. I'd like to share one of my favorite memories, and that would be when Kendall and I scored the two runs against Esconaba in the state semifinal game. At that point in the season, games tended to be low scoring, and with two strong teams going head to head, we knew even a couple of runs could shift the momentum. That moment of us scoring felt like the turning point, and it allowed us to get in their heads and win. From the moment we crossed the plate to the last out, the energy from our team and the excitement from the stands was unforgettable. Thank you.
I'm Katie Schuboy, and the team and I want to thank Mr. Trapp for all the work he does for this program, including lining the field, rescheduling, scheduling, bringing out. A memory I want to share is when Anna hit a walk-up homerun at regionals to win the game and to get us a championship. Thank you.
I'm Julie Rancilio. My team and I would want to thank all of our coaches for the help they gave us all season. We couldn't have won without them. And my favorite memory this season was the catch I made in foul territory, seeing all my teammates in the huddle after, and seeing how excited they were for me was something I'll never forget. This team was really, was really special and had a great connection, and we supported each other through every high and every low, and we picked one another up no matter what. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ashley Stafford. The team wants to thank the entire Richmond community for showing up to all the games and cheering loudly. We had the best fans of the tournament by far. A memory I want to share is postseason, from the postseason run, is the pickoff play we ran in semifinals against Esconaba. To start, the play was being called, and the environment was so loud, we could hardly hear our coaches. With it being the first pitch after the girl had gotten on base, the momentum for Esconaba was very intense, but we quickly shifted that energy our way. It was an awesome moment. I saw the runner take a big lead and trusted my second baseman and coaches completely. I wrote it down, she made perfect tag, and it was just one of those plays where everything clicks because you trust your teammates to have your back.
Thank you. Yeah, Mrs. Mashawn's going to let me just say a little something, ladies. You truly were extremely, extremely fun to watch. Your work as teammates, your love for each other showed big time as a fan in the stands. And personally, beating those private school girls was beautiful. Taking care of number one Esconaba, our number one pitcher, but that was a girl going to Michigan, right? We showed her. Just, you represented us so well, all the way through that tournament. You should be proud of yourselves, proud of your hard work and your dedication, no matter what your job was during the postseason. You made this happen, and you made us get another state championship from our softball team. Power to the women, because I'm all about that, power to the women. And you need to know, many months ago, I think it was February, your coach Kevin, he and I were together, and he told me that this team was going to win a state championship this year. That is the honest-to-God truth, and you also need to know that the last two times we won, he told me that too. So the man knows what he's talking about, and he knows what he's doing. So thank you.
We just want to thank you for coming tonight and letting us share your excitement. I think that went on. There will be nothing further, so if you would like to leave, you're welcome. Or you're welcome, say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our Athletic Hall of Honor, Athletic Hall of Fame.
All right. I think you did fill first last year. So I have the honor of announcing our third Athletic Hall of Fame class, a class of 2025. Some, some very deserving people in this group as well, so I'll get right into it. So from our athlete category, our first athlete we're inducting is class of 2015, is Devon Skatska. Devon was a four-time individual state champion and a member of two individual state championship wrestling teams. He was the 2015 Macomb County Football Player of the Year, and he also made the finals his senior year at the Medina Invitational, which is about a 60-team, two-day wrestling tournaments. It's an absolute bear. He's an all-state football player in addition to his wrestling career. After high school, he went to the University of Indiana, qualified for the national tournament, and then transferred to Minnesota his last two years, and was a two-time college All-American. And he, following college, was a couple wins away from making the Olympic team. So I had the pleasure of coaching Devon his senior year and being his practice partner, and he's the reason my neck cracks. Just a great kid, great athlete, and represented our school very, very well during and after high school. So our second athlete inductee is Nancy Neaton. She is class of 1981. Nancy was a pioneer for the girls' sports here at Richmond. She was a standout basketball player under Coach Carl Phillips. Once volleyball and softball were added, when the Title IX legislation came down, she joined those teams. She played basketball and softball at Sinclair Community College, and then later transferred to Saginaw Valley and played both there. While at SBSU, her '83-'84 team had a 32-1 record. She graduated from SBSU with a degree in social work and has continued to work in the area in that field, so congratulations to Nancy. Our coach inductee is Coach Bill Patton. Bill is a 1966 graduate of RHS. He came back and coached eighth and seventh, eighth grade track when the village failed and the program was going to be cut, volunteered to coach that and keep that program alive. Then transitioned into coaching JV boys' basketball, and then over to the girls' side, he took over the girls' program and had some successful seasons there, coaching for over 10 years in total. Our first team inductee is the 2006 state championship boys' soccer team. They were B-WAC district and regional champions, and then in the state championship, they knocked off the two-time defending state champ Detroit Country Day. And then I believe the next, the following year, they made the state semi, a lot of those players made the state semifinals. So it was groundbreaking for the soccer program. Another groundbreaking program we had that we're inducting this year is the 2013 baseball team. They went 34-5 overall. They were B-WAC district and regional champions. Along the way, they had to knock off the defending state champion St. Clair in the regional, and then that got them a game against Orchard Lake St. Mary's that they had to win in 10 innings. And I believe Dan Petrie's grandson was on that team. And they finished as state runner-ups to Grand Rapids Christian, and it was the first time a Richmond baseball team had made it past the quarterfinals. The only regional championship team before then was 2003. So this, this group set that, that new standard for the baseball program, and they've reached that state finals a number of times since. So two very, very deserving teams.
On behalf of the Richmond Education Foundation, I'd like to announce the five candidates that are going to be inducted into the Hall of Honor in September. First is Dr. Devon Patack, who is class of 2008. She is a renowned and published endodontist out in Boston. Our Richmond High School 2018 mock trial team, they were the very first team to go to state finals, and they pretty much set the tone for the success for our future mock trial teams. Our next inductee is Christine Rowley. She's the class of 1968. Chris is a retired Romeo teacher, but she has been heavily involved in our community with our Richmond-area Historical Society, and has worked very hard to make sure that Richmond's history is intact. Our next inductee is Vern Coleman. Vern is the class of 1972. Mr. Coleman is a local area farmer, and he has been on the forefront of working with legislation and getting things to happen for farmers in the Macomb County area. And our last inductee is Jennifer Starlin, class of 2003. Jennifer is an attorney, and she works for Tru Law, which is Richmond School's attorney, and board members would know her, and she has done a lot of work with our school district, with our administrators, and our staff, and so we are just very excited to bring those five people into the Hall of Honor this year. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Mashawn, just a reminder, on Sunday, September 28th at 1:00, is the Hall of Honor presentation. So it's a Sunday after homecoming, so it's at 1:00. Doors will open about 12:30. September 28th, yes, 1:00.
Thank you, sorry, I should have said that. Thank you. Hey, next item on our agenda is our 25, 26 child, our childcare handbook.
This is coming to a little earlier. Normally, I present this to you at the first meeting in August, and then we approve it at the second one. Trying to get this in June so that we can get these printed and everything, so that we start the school year, we're not carrying over changes. In several of the presentations that you're going to see tonight, there's not a whole lot of changes in the childcare. In the summary page, there's really just a couple of year changes, position and name changes. In all of them that are going to be here tonight, I will make sure the vision and mission statement are in there, because I think they were probably amplified, I forgot to. Page 5 just says the fee update, there's some language change, and some names removed as they would change over time, but the positions and where parents pay is a second. There's really minor changes to the childcare handbook.
Any questions for Mr. Wonstley on the childcare handbook? Okay, next item is the preschool parent handbook.
Similar to the childcare, we did most of the changes last year. There's a name change, some positions and names are updated. This one does have the vision and mission statement added. Program fees were adjusted in the catalog, and then there was just some language cleanup that occurred.
Anyone have any questions on the preschool parenting handbook? Okay, next one is the student athletic code handbook.
Couple more changes on this one than the previous. Again, the beginning pages are the year changes. There's some language to reflect the MHSAA rules when the physicals are completed, et cetera. Page 7 talks about credit recovery when we're dealing with the following two seasons, again, some clarifications on them. And page 8 talks about the credit recovery. Page 9 deals with the suspension. This was a unique situation that came across. So the suspension language is once the student officially comes back to school, because there's oftentimes a restorative practice that occurs, or a practice that occurs when someone is suspended, kind of to prevent them from being suspended. That's when the suspension officially ends, so it deals with weekends and holidays, et cetera. Page 13 talks about changes from sixth to seventh grade, or changes from seventh to sixth grade to allow six graders who can participate in some sports. 14 reflects some MHSAA language updates. 15 defines what a violation the handbook is, subject to yard classroom referrals. This really is intended to be making sure kids are in the classroom, and so we want them not making violations on our handbook. As you saw tonight with the softball team, they are a reflection of our district, and we have a very high standard for, for athletes. And then page 16, there was some redundant language, so we're taking out one part. And it also talks about the penalty carrying over. It just cleans up the language. Other than that, that's it.
Anyone have any questions on the student athletic code handbook? Okay, next one is our student parent handbook.
Again, similar changes with name and years, adding vision statement. There's a remove for reference to form, because sometimes we reference, you know, form changes, but it references that a form. Page 9 defines the adult as being 18 or older. We've had situations where we've had siblings signing kids out, it didn't define, because they're on the emergency card, but if they're signing them out, the way it's written is that an adult, an adult by law is 18 and older, so it just kind of cleans up that language. Page 11 removes the language. We haven't done this practice about collecting cell phones during lockdown. Obviously, we want them shut off as part of the practice, but one of the things in all of our training is that's a communication device, should kids need to get ahold of parents or they leave the building because we're exiting, that's another way of finding out where kids are at, so we don't want to take that from them. Page 13 removes the transgender to align them with the board policy. 14 references schedule changing process, that there is a process that would go through when the schedule is to be changed. 15 talks about the parent request for teachers, it defines placement. This is becoming more and more challenging, because we have, at the elementary, I believe there was 200-plus requests, there's no way we can meet all of those parent requests. So we do, the team, whether it's the teachers and the principal, and they do to try to create balance in the classrooms, et cetera. 20 and 22 are some language cleanup. We added childcare for the after-school supervision. Page 26 talks about the 80-20 rule as it's defined in middle school for those high school level courses. We removed on 30, 31, the class requirements for the class of 20-25, if they are a newest alumni and don't meet those requirements anymore. 34 clarifies the awards that we give at the middle school. 39 removes the dean of students and adds main office, not necessarily the dean of students who does that. 40 clarifies the language during the summer, it's not the high school that does working permits, it's at the board office, they do them. 43 removes the 75% requirement, legally we cannot deny a student credit, bad attendance. But if they have attendance, they, to pass the course, they pass the course. Obviously, we're going to encourage attendance and try to get them here, but it's all based on mastery of the content. On that practice, we have not, legally, we haven't, because there was conflict with law, so we haven't followed that, so this is just cleaning that up. 49 adds truancy, as failure to report to an assignment is part of a distruancy. We've had some situations where the current descriptions do not, someone doesn't, isn't in the area that they were supposed to be in, there's no real description, so we've tagged it with the truancy part of that reason, so it could be multiple reasons. 68 kind of goes in line with, page 68 goes in line with the athletic handbook, a requirement for a student to participate or be in school before they can participate, and the suspension's completed. 69 is language cleanup. 70 removes the senior junior requirement for parking passes, because depending on the age of the student, if someone's accelerated nearing the end, and they're able to drive, we don't, if they're able to drive, they can get a parking pass. I believe that's it. There's no major changes. We did a lot of these last year, there's just some kind of cleanup.
The student athletic handbook and the student parent, they have to be signed, right?
In power school, there's a acceptance, and then those that don't, we do, we don't usually get 100%, but we try our best to get, to sign off the yes, they have read, or have received the handbook.
Okay. I just have a roll of the candidates. I guess why do we even need it in there if we're not going to?
The attendance.
The one right here with the grades.
75%.
Yeah.
Wasn't it being structured?
I don't think we took out the whole piece of it. I mean, it says, "We encourage you to..."
There was conversation when we met with the administrator, just taking out. Part of it, what we wanted to do is, is the message is, "We want you here, we want to, obviously encourage you," but the reality is, if you don't come, and you can demonstrate competency, you're earning the credit. So that's why it wasn't taken out, but there was conversation among the team, let's just take it out.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question regarding the cell phone. I know in high school, I've been told anyways, that there's the red, yellow, green. The teachers have in their classrooms where they call it, like it's a red, blue, red, navy red, or yellow, or green, it allows them, which may have that built in as something that we're actually doing, or is that just like this?
No, it's in the, it lives in the course guide, written here in the handbook. It talks about the red. We have it technically throughout the district. Elementary, it's pretty much a red zone. Though we are getting more and more students, and younger students, bringing cell phones to school, so that becomes part of it, so we limit. At the middle school, it's more in the lockers. In general, I mean, there might be a, they're supposed to be. High school, the classrooms are determined by the teacher, and might be on a, it could be red, and no cell phones, or it could be bring them for the content that we might be using, like an app to quiz questions or something. But generally, in the locker room, or not locker room, the lunchrooms are a green zone, where kids can use them in the lunchroom, in hallways between classes. There are red zones, locker rooms, bathrooms, there's, cell phones are not to be out in there. The high school did, at the end of the year, do a lot of conversations and started comparing time on task with kids, and it would not surprise me if more teachers elected a red zone in the classroom. Next year, because we found that, kind of logically, what you would think, they're more attentive, they're more on task, there's less disruptor distractions, I should say. And there were some teachers that this past year had red zones, no cell phones, you put it in a, you know, a shooed container or locker. There was conversation among high school staff last year towards the end of the year, and I believe there's some more of that this year, but it's got to be in the syllabus so parents know and so forth there. We're not banning them. They're still in the lunchroom that they can have access, or between classrooms. And they've read, some schools have completely banned. We aren't there yet, because there's still a lot of value in some of our teachers using them in the classroom. I think it's less now, because we are one-to-one than it was when we first started this, if we weren't one-to-one, because that was the technology they had in classrooms.
How many years have we been doing that? Because I feel like it's working.
The red, yellow, green has been here, I think it was before I got here, you guys implemented that. It was, so at least 11 years we've done it. And it is very, there's been staff who are, absolutely none, there are staff who bring them in because they integrate it with the classroom.
I think a lot of teachers felt like it was going to be a very difficult battle to fight, you know, after having the conversations throughout this year, the teachers that are around, they're really able to share the strategies, and it's not as bad as they think they fear to compete, and the kids listen, and I'm glad.
Right, I mean, you read about all the other districts and what's going through and how, and I just don't feel like it's everybody an issue in our district.
I won't.
Not to that level, whereas, maybe it's because we're starting that implementation younger, like the understanding of the red zone, the green, like...
I think it's becoming more and more of a challenge with the younger grades, because we have, we have kindergartners who have brought phones to school, and so it's very few, but there have been some young kids, and how we use them. Like I said, as Brooke really said, it's, as you're seeing the benefits, I think if we just did across, like, no cell phones at all, it would be more, our focus would be different, because we'd be doing a lot more discipline and monitoring that, we're trying to get to a middle ground here.
So what we got right now, that is, I guess, in line with what the state House bill, or whatever that was, regarding the cell phone.
It leaves it up to the districts to implement.
Right, so that's meeting that requirement.
Any other questions on our student parent handbooks? Okay, next handbook is the employee handbook.
The employee handbook talks about, really, just, there's nothing major in this one. There's cleanups and things that we've evolved over the years. There are some pages that will be added prior to you approving it, like pages 1 through 5, the 25, 26 calendar, once you approve the REA contract tonight, or then I'll take that calendar and enter it in there. A recommended notification, generally, the practice with staff or out, the general practices, you elect your principal or go ahead of them, whether it's through a text message or so forth, if it's outside of the Red Rover. Again, it's not, we're not 100%, but we're trying to make sure coverage, and we have as much time to cover those classes. Number 6 just talks about chain of command. Oftentimes, it can be solved at the local level, and sometimes, some staff kind of jump to their supervisor, and we're trying to get them to start there, much like the board when they're chain of command on the brochure. Because it comes to me, I'm going to be bringing other people in, because I don't know the history, the background oftentimes. There's some language adding regarding approvals of the auditorium, regarding reviewing social media posts, or at least notifying the administrator or supervisor ahead of time, just to make sure we're all on the same page. There were some posts that were in the past year that had some inaccurate information, or some changes to things that the team didn't know about, or the office, we're just trying to stay tuned to that. Adding kind of a classroom management plan to the syllabus, so that parents know kind of what to expect, that the teacher's got a strike one, strike two, strike three plan. Some minor things like wiping surface down and adding to custodial duties in the checklist. There's language there that encourages employees, it doesn't require employees to add to go to extracurricular activity, oftentimes, whether they're teachers or secretaries, our kids like that, so again, it pulls in from other kind, just encouraging them to attend. Adding language to have the field trip approved and transportation before you start scheduling and sending things out. Sometimes, we send things out, and we don't even know if we have a bus, or get the bus locked in first. There's, again, 36 and 37 is calendar updates. 37, and I know we're going to have a fall presentation on standards-based grading, but one of the things that we found is, it's not that they aren't proficient a student, but there's just not enough evidence, so they want to talk about an LE, which is a lacking evidence, which may not, again, it may not mean that you're proficient, it doesn't mean that you're not proficient, it's just there's not enough assessment or to say, to rate a student, kind of, in some cases, some, we're forced to give something, and it's not a true representation, so that just...
Would that be like the case of, like, some missing assignments?
It could be, it could be, maybe it was the first time a teacher did it, and so there wasn't a mastery expectation, but yet you're not, not proficient, which is, it's a process, so we're not there yet. I don't see this as a lot, but it's just that, those unique situations that occur.
Would this stop them from being invited to be into the teacher-to-year-odd society?
That's never been part of the discussion, as far as stopping somebody, just more that the standard hasn't been assessed enough, or enough time for the student to demonstrate it, because that's really in proficient or not proficient. That's really what determines that aspect of the situation. 40 kind of cleans up the language. Each building does their access. It was previously to send to the media person, like in high school, they use eHaul to, if a class wants to come in and use his computer, they just book it through eHaul, they don't necessarily book it with the media person. 50 just talks about the importance of staff supervision on the playground, moving around, how to handle a situation, reminding that if the students can't go off, or we don't pick them up and move them, we call, call for assistance or EMS. 52 talks about maintaining locker room exterior doors, we don't prop them open, just clarifying. 64, page 64 talks about, make sure if we're using copyrighted materials, they're legally being used, we're not using stuff illegally, again, it just clarifies. 65, in some of our new curriculums, teachers have been given class sets, because it's a resource. Part of that is just monitoring that class set. Again, things happen, we know, we could be losing their job or anything, but just as an added, that when you get a class set, it's similar to monitoring that class set, like we would issuing books. And then, it's page 7, it just talks about, if someone's injured and they can't move, we don't pick them up, we don't put them in a rolling chair, because that's not necessarily legally, or a safe way to move, transport kids. If they're that injured, we call 911, get a ambulance here, get them medical treatments. So there's nothing in my major, a lot of that was done last year when we did this.
Right. I was just looking at this, and it's super basic, but the central office page, triple I, just needs some updating, like Director of Student Support Services, HR, all that stuff, it's all.
I will add that to the employee.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the employee handbook? Just Candace, to go back real quick on that red green, whatever, I did look up the student handbook, it is in our, the parent's student handbook, in a section. It's under the discipline section. It's on page 62. Okay, moving on our agenda, our next item is our Blue Devil Braves. Candace, do you have anything?
I do. First, I wanted to congratulate the Richmond High School track team for their first-place division championship, and their state championship decisions. Coach Alex Carter, Chris Maruto, Chris Malumbo, and the entire track boosters did an amazing job two weeks, two weekends ago, making sure that they had everything that they needed for the state's competition in Mason, Michigan. It was an exciting weekend, and quite something to be part of, representing Richmond, out in Mason with so many other schools there. The whole weekend, we were there, and Saturday was one division, and Sunday was another, and unbelievable how many schools participate with this track, and we really, really recognize it, Richmond. So congratulations to them, thank you for them. And a huge shout-out to Coach Lemon for bringing back the tennis camp at the Beatty Street. This was the week after school let out. It sounds like she had quite, quite a group of kids, she ended up sectioning it in two different age groups, and both were packed. So Luke was in that one, and so I talked to her quite a bit about bringing, starting it younger, bringing them back. You know, doing these camps really helped get them groomed for this beginning of high school, so give them a little taste of what that kind of was like. So it was very beneficial, so thank you to her for doing that. And thank you to the Beatty Street Park's track for letting us do that, and Mr. Track for getting that together, and sharing, it was wonderful.
Okay, Sandy?
I don't have anything.
Sarah?
Nothing.
Margaret?
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to Kyle Simmons at the high school baseball All-Star Game on Friday night at Comerica Park. Kyle was honored by the Michigan High School Baseball Coaches Association Assistant Coach of the Year. He was one of five coaches throughout the state who have ever honored Friday night, so pretty cool. Kyle has spent a lot of years with the team, and given a lot of time to those boys, so it's very cool that he gets acknowledged.
Is anyone there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Raymond?
Nothing at this time.
And Danielle?
I just wanted to talk about Sandy and Margaret, and Brian and I met for the student board reps last weekend in the interviews, but I was just floored by the maturity of the interviews that we had. We had an incoming sophomore who blew me away with her maturity level. Like, she could have easily been much older than she, you know, truly was. And also, our senior that we interviewed, incoming senior, was also, the maturity levels of them was just phenomenal, and we had such a hard time picking, that it almost came down to a literal coin flip, because they were both amazing, so.
I was going to do it in items of interest, but now I'll follow up, to let the board know that we, our new student board rep for next year is going to be Kelsey McNamara. She's going into 10th grade, and just to echo what Danielle said, two really great candidates, but this girl is gonna, she's gonna be good, so we're excited to have her join us. She will come back with Elizabeth at our August meeting.
Thank you for that whole team group that did those interviews. Okay, I have nothing on my part. Next item on the agenda is our superintendent and legislative update, Mr. Montoya.
The only thing I have is, once the contract is approved for the REA tonight, tomorrow we'll release the calendar for the 24-25 square, and a lot of parents are waiting for that. I don't have any legislative update, I wish I had some update. I do know they worked on Friday, and they were working over the weekend. I talked to our legislative liaison, there's a lot of deals being cut in the back room, so we're just curious what the final outcome's going to be. In all three cases, there is an increase, but it's just a matter of how much, or whether they're going to take categoricals away, and put that on the foundation, I don't know. So that's the only thing, is the calendar we've got released tomorrow.
Anyone have any questions?
I was going to ask, this could be totally, this is a hot question, but I know that you're in your superintendent group, and you guys have your opinions, how much pull do you guys actually have, in terms of going to, they listen to you?
I will say, they listen when they don't all stick together by party lines. If they're looking at what's right for public schools, they take a lot of the information. The last couple of years, it's been very hard, because they stay on party lines. I think that's societal, we have, we have an issue that we've got to have more compromise on it, and I think one of our board candidates said this, it's not about disagreeing, it's understanding the other person's perspective, and recognizing that, and I'm not going to do it justice, how she said it, but quite, all of a sudden, that's exactly what I'm...
Not necessarily a debate, but a discussion.
That's it.
I can ask for all the...
And that's what needs to happen, because it isn't about Republicans right or wrong, or Democrats right or wrong, it's about if we truly invest in public education and believe in it, there shouldn't be a debate here. Today's a great example. Billy and I and several of our team went to the ISD. You might have heard, it's kind of coined in the process, the Mississippi Miracle, they called the Mississippi Marathon, but they went from 50th to 9th, 13th in the nation, they're... the nation, they're me, so we went and learned about them, learned about Massachusetts, and the commonality in all of them is their governor and both houses of their legislator agree public school is our focus, and they put the dollars and their efforts together. That's the difference between them and Michigan, so. To go back to your question, do they listen? I share with our legislators, they give our, here's how it's gonna impact Richmond, but oftentimes, they've been sticking to party lines, which is kind of frustrating because it's not one size fits all.
Collectively, do you have a voice?
Every time that the budgets go out, the com superintendent's put out a position, they put the cards out, we're in support of this, we're not in support of this, and then we collectively give our reasons why and a rationale why. The big thing I'm worried about is last year they passed that retirement permanent decrease in legislation, and the one of the bills, they take that away. That's a huge shift in finance. And here you give us a care of one year, and now you take it away to reallocate that money. I'm concerned they're taking all of university out of general fund and putting it in the school aid, and taking that general fund dollars for the road to bad. So collectively, yes, we send it out, we give our cards, if you will, we're in support or against, and if we're against, these are the rationale why. And we got some of the great, I mean, financial minds in understanding that, Albany is one of the best in the county or state. There's a lot of logic or reason, but we do what we can.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, next item on our agenda is items of interest from the board. Raymond?
Nothing.
Margaret?
Nothing.
Danielle?
Good.
Sandy?
All set, thank you.
Candace?
Hi, Deb.
Sarah?
The only thing I want to say is I just want to wish our students and our faculty a good summer, safe summer, enjoy that time off, and we're looking forward to seeing you back in the fall.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone who would like public comments? Being no public comments, we're gonna move on to our action items. Okay, you guys ready? Take a deep breath. I'm gonna look at my thing, it's all set. Okay, here we go. I am looking for a motion for the approval of a fiscal twenty-twenty-five general fund final budget and the fiscal twenty-twenty-six general fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the FY twenty-twenty-five general fund final budget and the FY twenty-twenty-six general fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the fiscal twenty-twenty-five debt fund final budget and the fiscal twenty-twenty-six debt fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the FY twenty-twenty-five debt fund budget, final budget, and FY twenty-twenty-six debt fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion, Sarah? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for the approval of a fiscal twenty-twenty-five food service fund final budget and a fiscal twenty-twenty-six food service fund original budget.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five food service fund final budget and fiscal year two thousand twenty-six food service fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the fiscal twenty-twenty-five student school activity fund final budget and fiscal twenty-twenty-six student school activity fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five student school activity fund final budget and fiscal year two thousand twenty-six student school activity fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with AIS for heavy operating equipment course.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with AIS for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year to offer the course heavy operating equipment for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund is authorized.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with City of Richmond for the television and broadcast media one and two course.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with City of Richmond for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year to offer the course television and broadcast media one and two, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized.
Support. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for Emergency Medical Technician EMT Course.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year to offer the course for Emergency Medical Technician EMT, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund.
Support. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Logosoft for Adobe K-12.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with Logosoft for Adobe K-12 for an amount not to exceed two thousand three hundred fifty dollars, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, some of these may be small, but when you collectively add all of the same vendor, they go over that ten thousand threshold, so, as for purchasing, that's why you're getting some of these.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with FPG for Thrill Share Media subscription.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with FPG for Thrill Share Media subscription for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you say aye?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear you say aye.
I did it when I did my name.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with CDWG for Microsoft three sixty-five, eight-five subscription.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with CDWG for Microsoft three sixty-five, eight-five subscription for an amount not to exceed two thousand nine hundred and four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you, any discussion?
Is that for all students or just staff?
I believe that's all students.
Five, eight, five, so it's in?
That's all students.
Is it?
That's all staff and students across the district, it's in there. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Sarah?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Inacom TSG MOR Trend Micro Endpoint Detection and Response.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a three-year contract with Inacom TSG for endpoint security for a total not to exceed forty thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty cents, for which thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents shall be allocated from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund. Thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents shall be allocated from the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven general fund, and thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents shall be allocated from the two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight general fund as authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any questions? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Delta Network Services for FortNet Support.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with Delta Network Services for FortNet Firewall Support, code trim, and renewal for, sorry, an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and present, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion? I almost said FortNet. This is a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Delta Network Services for Extreme Network Software Subscription and Support.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Delta Network Services for Extreme Networks Software Subscription and Support Renewal for an amount not to exceed four thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Delta Network Services for AXA CQ Vision Software Subscription.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Delta Network Services for AXA Vision Software Subscription for an amount not to exceed five thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. I give it to Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Delta Network Services for ShoreTel VO-VO-L-T. Telephone System Support.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with Delta Network Services for ShoreTel VOIT Phone System Renewal and Support for an amount not to exceed eight thousand ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Inacom for Student Safety Management.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Inacom for Student Safety Management for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Inacom TSG for Trend Micro Endpoint Detection and Response.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Inacom TSG for BE software. I have for Microsoft three sixty-five for your subscription agreement for an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars, for which funding from the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you, any discussion?
Is this the same thing?
No.
Oh.
Oh, it was her motion, but her motion was for what?
Well, why do you keep the motion going if it's not the same thing? What the motion was and what is Q, don't match, right? The motion says Inacom TSG for BE V-A software backup.
Yes, correct.
That says for Trend Micro Endpoint Detection, that's what you said Q was.
Okay, so the motion here, though, is for what's in the actual statement that Candace just read. So I made a mistake, even though the wording gave number top is. Are we okay with that? What I stated is what was on here, but that is not correct.
Yeah, so the motion was correct.
But the motion is correct.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry about that, guys.
My question, it says that continuous monitors endpoints such as staff and student devices and that within the service organizations. So student devices include personal cell phones, or is it just student devices that from a disregard the laptops that be issued, but also, it also monitors if a student's personal device gets on our Wi-Fi, we monitor the connectivity. So if they connect and say our Wi-Fi, and if they say something inappropriate, it's gonna come through. Something using the school resources or technology. Correct, correct. But if they use their own device and are connected to, like a virtual hotspot or something, that does, it does not monitor that. Okay. I have another question.
Okay, do we still got a question?
Okay.
That, all of our information on the action page talks about Trend Micro Endpoint Detection and Response. The motion does not say that. What's on Q is what you read. Everything in here talks about this Trend Micro EDR, but that's not the motion, right? Am I reading that correctly?
I, I actually looked at the last one, because I called Candace today on this. There is some different description in here, Margaret, but not a lot. So maybe we can ask Eric real quick.
No, we, we don't need to ask Eric, we need to know. The information that we got here from Board Action talks about one thing. The agenda talks about that, but the motion's something completely different. So are we supposed to have something for this Trend Micro Endpoint as well as this?
We already did the endpoint one. We already passed the endpoint one.
You have the agenda. Yeah, because the motion speaks to the.
So that was K.
For the, for the beam, the V-A-F.
So K.
K is also.
We already approved.
Correct, correct.
So even though this information here is talking about Trend, it should not, it should be telling us about this V-A-F.
There should be two Inacom's. One is for the EDR, Point Detection and Response, and then there would be one for Office three sixty-five backup.
And that's what our motion is on Q. So what probably should have stated up there is that this Q should have been the backup for our Microsoft three sixty-five.
That's correct, there's two different ones from Inacom. Do you have a backup documentation?
Will we be getting any backup for this V-A-F in the motion, right? Am I, am I reading that correctly?
The action sheet that you turned in to Cindy, do you have those documents? Because this is, this is cleaned up from what you turned in.
I.
I, I just, I just want someone, just someone telling me that this, this motion, this is a correct motion.
Correct, that is correct.
We, we need to approve this, if that's correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. We just did, that's the backup, the.
But it's the software back.
Yes, that is what it is.
Quote is for, if you look at the agenda items, and the quote that's covered fifty-four hundred, that follows the agenda action item.
Okay.
It's just the verbiage.
The extraction. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, anyone have any other questions before we vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the purchase or the approval of a contract with Sehi for laptop replacements.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of laptops from Sehi Computer Products, Inc. for a total not to exceed $101,076 for which funding from the Non-Bond Capital Projects Fund is authorized and outlined in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any questions?
This will be the second item that you guys are using a set aside for. We've done buses in the past. We are now starting with that money, setting aside for the last five years. We're now starting to use that fund, so it's doing its intended purpose.
Anyone have any questions or any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with TEOMA Systems for access point maintenance.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with TEOMA Systems for access point maintenance renewals for an amount not to exceed $1,098.25 for which funding from the 2025-2026 general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Renaissance for the Accelerated Reader Program.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Renaissance for an amount not to exceed $9,988.63 for which funding from the 2025-26 general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support? Okay, then to Margaret, I heard her just a minute. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the motion. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Savas for Vision Math for previously board-approved grade-grade K-12 mathematics instructional resources.
I motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent and give a two-year purchase agreement with Savas for Vision Learning Company for K-12 mathematics, speed resources and materials for an amount not to exceed $96,935.50 for which $48,467.50 shall be funded from the 2025-26 general fund and $48,467.50 shall be funded from the 2026-27 general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any questions? This is a roll call vote. Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with NWEA for the purchase of K-12 benchmark assessments.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a five-year contract with Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA, for an amount not to exceed $99,187.50 for which $19,837.50 shall be funded from each of the next five years general fund and as presented in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any questions?
So, Raymond, this is, the NWEA is a five-year contract?
Yeah, to get the significant discount, it's a five-year, and it's part of the State Department to do that benchmark assessment. We do get some of this reimbursed from the state, assuming, again, assuming they keep it in the budget they've done in the past, but yes.
Any other questions? This is a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with iXL for previously board-approved grade-K-12 for academic intervention resources.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with iXL for an amount not to exceed $18,826.25 for which funding from the 2025-26 general fund is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any discussion? It's a roll call vote. Raymond?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a resolution for a special election on November 4th, 2025. Whoever reads this motion, you have to read the whole thing.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the following resolution. Whereas the opinion of this board, it is necessary and expedient to ask voters whether to approve a bond project consisting of erecting, furnishing, and equipping additions to school buildings, remodeling, equipping, and re-equipping and furnishing and refurnishing school buildings, acquiring, installing, equipping, and re-equipping school buildings for instructional technology, and preparing, developing, improving, and equipping playgrounds and sites. This board estimates the necessary cost of the project to be $53,250,763. It will be necessary for the district to borrow the sum of $51,800,000 and issue the bonds of the district, therefore, the remaining funds to be derived from the investment of bond proceeds. This board intends to submit a proposition at a special election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Honored before 4:00 PM on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, the board shall certify any ballot proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to conduct elections within the district, the election coordinator. Now therefore be resolved that a special election of the school electors of the district is to be called and held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The proposition to be voted on at the special election shall be stated on the ballot and substantially the form is set forth in Exhibit A. The election coordinator is requested to: A) utilize the voice newspaper, McCombs Daily, newspapers published or of general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirements; B) utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the forms of the notices of last day of registration and election, and substantially the form is set forth in Exhibit B attached here too; C) provide approved copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. This board estimates the period of usefulness of the improvements for which bonds of the district, the amount of $51,800,000, are to be issued to be not less than 22 years. The secretary of this board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk, clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
This just culminates our work, so this is taking it official.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a three-year master agreement between our MEA Local 1 and our Richmond Education Association, R.E.A., and Richmond Community Schools.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a three-year contract to expire on Office 31st of 2028 between the MEA Local 1 Richmond Education Association and Richmond Community Schools as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support? Any discussion?
I just want to thank the bargaining team. Actually, we've done this before, the contract inspired. Mr. Jar is here with also Mrs. Crampton, Mr. Kudos. A lot of cleanups, and it's a very positive contract for our teachers, and it's reasonable. I think it's fair and reasonable, as they would describe us.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm stating.
I am stating.
Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a three-year master agreement between the Teamsters Local 214 and the Secretarial Bargaining Unit and Richmond Community Schools.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a three-year contract to expire on June 30th, 2028 between Teamsters Local 214, Secretarial Bargaining Unit, and Richmond Community Schools as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support? Okay, go, Frank.
I'll give it to you right now. I'm going to break it down.
Any discussion?
I would just like to compliment this bargaining team. Billy and I had the privilege, along with this was Mr. Gibson and Mr. Knight, they were part of our team, Mrs. Ferrante, Mrs. Pinsky, Mr. Hart, the local Teamsters. It was actually a very pleasant bargaining experience, very cooperative, and again, I think it's a fair and reasonable conference.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a three-year master agreement between the Teamsters Local 214 and the Educational Paraprofessional Bargaining Unit and Richmond Community Schools.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a three-year contract to expire on June 30th, 2028 between the Teamsters Local 214 and Educational Paraprofessional Bargaining Unit and Richmond Community Schools as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support? Thank you. Any questions?
Just echo this group, and the leadership was Mr. Hart from the Teamsters, it was also Mrs. Eitzel, who's this paraprof at the middle school, and Mrs. Fletcher, paraprof. Again, this was Billy and I, along with, this was Mrs. Morella and Mr. Knight served